Just a couple of housekeeping things. Any amendments to any of the motions that are made after the articles are read will have to be in writing, and the town clerk over here has the forms you can use if you'd like to make an amendment to a motion in writing. We ask that if you wish to speak, that you come to a microphone, state your name and your legal address. You have to be a registered voter in order to speak. If you can't for some reason get to a microphone because you're physically disabled, please let us know, and we'll do our best to get a microphone to you or make some other accommodation for you. And I've been told about 12 times already, there's a hockey game. I know that. So although we're not going to rush through simply to get through things, we would ask that we move things along and that we try not to be redundant. And as always, be polite and listen to someone else's opinion without editorial comment, if you will. Could everyone please rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the common good, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We have a special town meeting prior to our annual town meeting, and I would like the constable to read the call to -- yes, Mr. Cunningham.
Pursuant to the articles of the special town meeting, I have notified the people of the Town of Newbury thereof.
Thank you. Article one, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $106,795 or any other sum from free cash to fund the snow and ice deficit or act in relation thereto." I'd like to hear a motion to that article.
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article two, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $20,620 or any other sum from the sale of land fund to purchase two lawnmowers for the DPW or act in relation thereto." Motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article three, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $38,880 or any other sum from free cash to pay for a weir at Middle Road or act in relation thereto." Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir. You can go to this mic, I think.
David Powell, 148 Orchard Street. This weir, et cetera, is not at Middle Road, so I would like this to be explained either by the Finance Committee or perhaps also by the Selectmen as to why this is on the warrant. This weir lies about 100 feet from Middle Road. It will not protect any town property, any town asset, and it's $39,000, which we do not have to spend on that kind of item. There are also other details, but I'd like to hear a real rationale for this.
Thank you. Mr. Connors, can you speak to this? I'm told you can.
I'm Bob Connors. I'm chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. Does everybody -- did everyone grab our report that was on the counter? We went into specific detail. If you turn to page three, under CPC recommendations, the capital construction project, flood control project identified as the proposed weir project, Middle Road, Newbury. Mr. Powell is correct that the actual work is now taking -- is going to take place on private property. If the town owned this property, this would have been done many, many years ago. There were six criteria that the Capital Planning Committee uses to review, analyze, and then make a determination on a project of this type. We've spelled it out here. I won't bore you all reading each and every one of those details, but you'll see our specific findings on those six items. The goal here is to minimize the flooding on Middle Road. Those that use it on a regular basis during those challenging times a few winters ago realize this particular problem, there was a bottleneck on this property. The town will be receiving permanent easements and construction easements so that we will be able to maintain this choke point in perpetuity.
Thank you.
I'm afraid that explanation misses a couple of things in that this so-called choke point is actually downstream from Middle Road, and the choke point itself is actually a collapsed gate to an old ice pond. Essentially, this is something that involves a threat of a lawsuit to the town, and I really feel that we should not be spending money that should be spent by the owner of the property who did not actually own the property at the time that the problem arose. So this is not some personal vendetta or anything I have. This is simply a principle that I feel is important, that we should not be subsidizing people's care of their own property, essentially. And I don't understand, among other things, why this item is in special town meeting either. It really should be in our regular town meeting because this is not a transfer of funds, which is what we normally use the special town meeting for. So I urge you to vote against this item.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Any other discussion?
May I respond?
Please, Bob. Sure.
Is Doug Packer -- did I see Doug here earlier?
No, he's not.
Okay. The request for this project started at the town level. It went through the Conservation Commission, which is really the appropriate body to address flooding, wetlands, drainage, items of that nature. The firm of Vine Associates was engaged, and a detailed analysis was done in excess of 100 pages. These documents are available electronically to all that would like to review those, and the Capital Planning Committee stands by its recommendation. It's in the best interest of our community to have Middle Road passable at all times. First responders use it on a regular basis, and quite frankly, my wife uses it to go shopping.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the article as moved?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will now -- it passes. I'll now entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
Motion.
One more.
One more.
I have four. I have four. Oh, I'm sorry. My fault. I apologize. Article four, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $6,068.50 or any other sum from free cash to pay for various expenses of the Historic Commission or act in relation thereto." Move?
Move.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now I will entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now begin the annual town meeting of the Town of Newbury, and I ask the constable again to read the return of the warrant.
Pursuant to the articles in the regular town meeting, I have notified the townspeople of the date of time.
Thank you. Article one, "To act on the reports of the Selectmen, School Committee, Regular and Special Committees, and all other town offices." Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Article two, "To see if the town will fix the salaries and compensation of all certain elective officers of the town as follows. Town moderator, $200. Board of Selectmen, each member $3,000. Board of Assessors, Chair $3,500. Board of Assessors members, $2,500. Town clerk, $52,209. Tree warden, $3,000. Fish commissioner, each member $1,300." Motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article three, before we begin Article three on appropriations, I believe the Finance Committee has a brief presentation that they wish to do. Is this the appropriate time? I'll call on the Finance Committee.
I'm going to borrow -- move it over here. We've got to work here at the same time. Whoops. Whoa, watch out. That's it. It stretched with limit. Can you all hear me? We've got lots of space up front. If you all want to move closer, you'll be able to see the slides a little bit better. No? I'm actually subliminally going to have the Bruins game in between the slides, so no. Okay. I think this first slide some of you have seen from last fall at the town meeting is pretty appropriate. Is pretty appropriate because our town hall is now nearly completed, and our town barn, although it still has a little work left, is also nearly completed. Twenty-six separate volunteers and donors to town hall and 11 for the town barn. This is what Newbury is all about. Now it's not working.
I just want to remind everybody, this is a presentation by the Finance Committee. So if you have questions about this presentation, I'd appreciate if you could hold them unless it's very necessary to bring it up at that given moment when you're seeing something. Otherwise, we could get bogged down, you know, off track, whatnot.
That's what I thought, but they're not working. This is the current Finance Committee. We have a new member. Welcome Linda Allen to the Finance Committee. Linda probably has lived in Newbury or Byfield longer than anybody else, except for maybe Jean, so she certainly knows the issues and knows the town of Newbury. And we welcome Linda. She's a business owner. She has good financial sensitivity, so she'll be a good addition to the Finance Committee. Also, although I'm not sure he's here tonight, but a new member of the Capital Planning Committee is Nick Oram of Green Street in Newbury. Nick is recently retired, has a terrific, long business background as a business owner, and should also be a great addition to the Capital Planning Committee. As you know, Bob Connors is chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, and if you haven't seen it, this is the latest version of our capital plan. This is a terrific improvement of what we've done and what we haven't had in the past, and it outlines everything, and it actually provides a program for us looking five, you know, to six years forward on a rolling basis. So we know pretty much what we're in store for as far as capital spending is concerned. The theme for this year is stay the course. Things are going actually pretty well. We've caught a few breaks this year, which I'll explain, and we're in better shape than we have been in the past. Current highlights, our revenues right now as of the end of April are 2% ahead of our projections for the year, at this time of the year. Part of that's because our excise taxes are up considerably. They'll probably be maybe $100,000 above what we projected for the year. Tracy continues to do a good job in collecting back's taxes, and there are some other positive improvements. Our new growth is up slightly. State aid is improved a little bit, although not greatly. The biggest thing is our current free cash availability is, right now, as we sit here tonight, is $787,000, which has got to be some kind of all-time record, and I'll explain that a little bit more. Operating costs are slightly ahead at the moment, but that's because of prepayments during the year, and it's projected to be operating costs about a percentage point below what we forecasted for the year. So that's also a good result. Snow and ice, as you know, is $107,000. It's finally caught up with us. We've had a few years of no snow and ice. This winter, we're $107,000 over it, but that's going to be covered by free cash because we've got the free cash for it. Town hall and town barn upgrades are nearly complete. The other big thing is the transfer station, as most of you know, maybe everybody knows now, has a changed business model. We've now outsourced the operation of the transfer station to Mellow and Company of Georgetown, who are experts in trash collection and hauling. And so what we've done is also transferred out the revenues for that, but also all the costs now for the transfer station are going to be borne by Mellow under contract. To us, that means probably a net improvement in our revenues of about $50,000 a year. Education costs, the other big break that we're catching right now, are down, 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 $272,000 overall. Our assessment from Triton is down almost $100,000 higher than that, but our enrollment at Whittier has nearly doubled, or it has doubled, which has increased our cost to Whittier about $100,000. So the net result is $272,000 in savings for this year, which is, means a lot to us. Refinancing of debt continues, be down another $156,000 in FY14, and FY15, it'll be down almost $600,000. So there's a big breakpoint in our debt service. And all our contract negotiations are completed and funded right now, so things are going well. This is part of the result. This is the snapshot of our current and our projected reserves for FY14. Current reserves are about $1,004,000, which, as I said, has got to be in itself a bit of a record. And for FY14, they're projected to be 2.2 million, even after some capital expenditures which we're going to present and ask for your approval in the articles tonight. This is just a picture of the trend in available funds, and as you can see on the far right, free cash was astounding last year. I mean, Tracy has done a remarkable job at managing our costs and our revenues, and the result was almost $1,000,000 in free cash last year, which has got to be a record, and that's really helpful to us. But at the same time, the green bar is our stabilization fund, which is really very low and should be considerably higher than that, and we need to seek to improve that. In fact, we're going to ask for the appropriation of $250,000 just for the stabilization fund this year so we can be better prepared for emergencies in the future. These are some of our accomplishments from this year. Restructuring of operations, that continues. We said that changing our business model needed to be a high priority, which it is. The transfer station change is a good example of that. Sale of surplus property has been remarkable success so far. Will probably, once we consummate the recent sales of the Woodbridge School, the Yellow School, the Plum Island property and so forth, will net $844,000, which will go right to our land sale fund, which however can only be used under state law for capital. We have the ongoing pursuit of unpaid taxes. That continues. We've increased user fees and permits, and we're increasing available reserves, which I've gone over. And we want to further strengthen financial management. As I've said many times, that may be the most important function we have as a town. Our financial performance is our strength, and we need to watch that very carefully. Tracy's doing a good job. We've added a little capability. We're going to add some more software this year, and we're being professionally managed, make no mistake. These are goals and priorities for this year. Continue to build on current initiatives. Reinstate public safety programming to an adequate position. Develop a road improvement program. We need to program out what roads need to be fixed and when, and have a schedule for doing that. There's a lot of work to be done in Byfield and other roads around Newbury. Establishing the stabilization funding program. What we want to do is begin funding stabilization annually so that we're steadily building it back up to where it belongs. The DOR says it ought to be about 5% of our total revenues. We need to maintain our reserves, address capital facilities issues, and Tracy has set a goal of enhancing communications for the town overall, and part of that is televising town meetings, televising Board of Selectmen meetings, and having access to our public deliberations as much as possible. Fiscal challenges remain. We are still almost wholly dependent on property taxes. You all know that. We've said that many times. Local state aid is increasing, but only marginally. We have limited new revenue sources. We need to work on that. As far as expenditures are concerned, health insurance costs are perhaps one of the biggest risks looking ahead. We don't know where they're going from year to year. This year, we expect about an 8% increase, and Massachusetts, I'm told, has the highest insurance rates in the nation right now. And I'm not sure anything we can do about that, but it's something we need to live with, but plan the best we can for it. Also, I've mentioned the drop in our school assessment, and it's really because, as best I understand it, it's very complicated, but the two-step method of funding, the first step being our minimum contribution, which is determined by the state, was DOE. Now it's the DESE. My wife and daughter call it DC. Determines what our assessment is for minimum contribution on the foundation budget. And what happened was that, or is that, and Christopher's here, he can correct me if I misstep, but in any case, best I understand it, is that the state has set a target for cities and towns of 82.5% of your maximum potential contribution, which is based on wealth and based on equalized value, property values. Never mind that we can't tax wealth, but that's how they determine what your ability to pay is. We're supposed to be capped at 82.5%, but it was never a cap. It was a target. And Newbury had crept up through inflation to about 89.5%, and what is now happening is the DESE has decided to reset that back to the target. And this is not just Newbury. This is all cities and towns that were over the target. So we caught a big break, you know, $373,000 in reduced assessment, really driven by the DESE. So in any case, the other two towns have voted for their budgets, and hopefully will vote to approve ours tonight, and we can lock this in as a result of that. We don't know, however, what the legislature's going to do or try to do. They actually tried to adjust this a bit, but I guess, for lack of a better term, we're a little bit late in doing it, so it won't be adjusted to our knowledge this year. And Brian Forgé, who is the Administrative Assistant Superintendent for Triton, has more or less confirmed that with us. So nevertheless, we have a break. We just have to watch carefully what's going to happen going forward. So scrubbing it all away, these are our projected revenues in a very broad sense for next year. Overall, we're looking at about a 3% increase. Tax levy marginal at 1%. The big winner is available funds, and that's, those are things like free cash and stabilization and so forth, and those are monies now that we have available, particularly for capital, but also to cover some of our expenses like snow and ice. This is just a quick snapshot of state aid and the trend in state aid over the last few years. This was a slide that Tracy produced for the Board of Selectmen in her budget book. And by the way, this is what Tracy's budget book looks like. It's about 100 pages covering every aspect of her projections for next year and our current condition and so forth. This is a great book. As far as expenditures are concerned... Board of Assessors worries about everything. Thanks, but... You know, our expenditures are actually going to drop a little bit next year, thanks in part to our free cash. Municipal departments will recover. As you know, we've cut them pretty drastically over the last two to three years. I mean, dangerously low, and they're going to recover a bit now, and we're able to do that. And education is down as part of it, and our debt service is down considerably, and it's going to continue down. Part of the result is our ability to invest in capital. Now here is a list of, I think there are eight projects that we're going to ask you to approve tonight. There'll be actually multiple projects under DPW. There's some equipment needs they have. A total is going to be about $208,000. Road improvements, $411,000, will all come out of Chapter 90 money. That's state subsidy for road maintenance for us and reconstruction and so forth. We have about $600,000 now. We're going to get probably another $400,000 this year, so even after all that, when it's done, we'll still have around $410,000 available. Byfield Grange Hall needs repairs to both roof and windows. Middle Road, we've already talked about, that's been approved. The Historic Commission, that's actually money that was generated by the Historic Commission. We've approved that. Fire turnout, safety gear. We've pretty much agreed in discussing with the fire chief that there's, we need to replace the gear that they use when they go to fires. It's protective gear, and it's about $2,000 a set, and he's asked for 50 sets over the next three years. So it's about $36,000. So it's about $36,000 a year. We've already transferred for next year $20,000 out of reserve funds that we'd had available. So that leaves $16,000 to raise for next year, and then there'll be 36 the following year, and 36 in 2015. Newbury Elementary School repairs, which are in Bob's book, they've all been studied by engineers, and there are plans, and that's pretty much programmed out. $69,700. And then the same for the library, needs some window and roof repairs. That's all I have right now. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll get on with the articles.
I think we should address the questions at the time of each article. Thank you, Frank. Mr. Carno, would you speak to the capital improvement plan for a little bit?
I promise to be quick. I know the Bruins are playing. Before I delve into our report, I would like to recognize a couple of our members who served faithfully and are now moving on. Kathleen Pearson, Frank Wettenkamp. When we started the Capital Planning Committee 24 months ago, we were starting from scratch. So it was a lot of work, a lot of team effort, working in conjunction with Tracy, our town administrator, Sam Jocelyn, our Director of Facilities, and all of our department heads. I'd like to welcome Larry Gay, who is the new FinCom member to capital planning, as which I am. And Frank mentioned Nick Orem, who is a wonderful addition and very, very anxious to participate. The Capital Planning Committee, over the last 24 months, working with everyone I just described, we've managed to catalog all of our assets, all of our vehicles. We now have an updated current inventory, and we're identifying capital improvement projects to maintain all of our buildings. All of our deferred maintenance, really the small projects, where we're getting current on, they're scheduled to be done, but we're facing challenges on three other structures. The library, our school, and we have a police station that we do need to address. The library and school, the town meeting approved monies last year to acquire and order capital needs assessments. It's an engineering report that basically delves into the condition of these buildings, and then programs out over the next 20 years when we're going to need money to make replacements and normal repairs. Roofing, windows, exterior envelope. And Frank mentioned, we have a lot of free cash, which is a record. I'm going to give you some of the projected numbers that we're going to be facing in the next five to 10 years. And if you turn to our handout, page two, the first bullet. The needs assessment report has identified anticipated long-term expenditures in the amount of just under $800,000 for the library, and just under $1.5 million for the Newbury Elementary. Now that's based over a 20-year period, but years seven through 11 and 13 are when 90% of these monies are going to be expended. Major items like roofs at the school, roofs at the library, and other items. The Newbury Police Station, it's been in this location, I think since 1977. Our department operates as efficient as it can within the space, but we are quickly approaching a time where the road and the path we followed at our town barn, we're quickly following suit with our police station, and it truly is going to be something that needs to be addressed in the near term. And certainly to undertake the discussion of replacing the police station requires an open dialogue and great community support. So what I'd like to do is have you leaving this room tonight knowing where we were 24 months ago, we've made great inroads. Our reserves are up, all of our equipment are on scheduled replacements. It's improved efficiency, it's reduced repairs. But we have these other three items coming up that are multimillion dollar commitments by the town. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Bob.
I'm not going to go into any of the other warrant articles unless there's a question and I'll respond to it.
Thank you. Article three, as we go through it, if there's an item upon which you have a question, simply say "hold," and we will come back at the end and address it. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,774,311 and take from the Special Assessment Fund the sum of $627,261 for the operation of the town in fiscal year 2014, or act in relation thereto. Motion? I'm sorry, let me read the whole thing first. Moderator salary and wages $200, moderators' expenses $50, selectmen's stipend $15,000, selectmen's salary and wages $47,650, selectmen's expenses $3,200. Town administrator salary $115,000, IT services $15,000, professional and technical services $30,000, town administrator expense $5,000, finance committee expense $420, reserve fund $90,000, finance department salary and wages $160,200, finance department expense $50,400, tax title and foreclosure $20,000, assessors' stipend $8,500, assessors' salary and wages $105,880, assessors' expenses $40,301, audit the town books $25,000, legal expense $75,000, personnel board $500, town clerk salary and wages $69,786, town clerk expense $5,800, records preservation $10,000, general code upgrades, excuse me, $5,000, election expense $7,355, registrar or voter's salary $750, conservation salary and wages $75,663, Plum Island Beach Management $5,000, conservation vehicle allowance $1,800, conservation expenses $2,500, beaver management $5,000, stormwater management expense $5,000, tree warden's salary $3,000, tree warden expense $20,000, clam flats, town wages $4,000, planning board wages $62,205, pictometry, MIMI map, assessors' map $3,500, planning board expense $5,720, MVPC dues, which is Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, I presume, $2,205, zoning board of appeal salary and wages $900, zoning board of appeal expenses $250, public building repair and maintenance $15,300, property-related services $30,600, public building utilities $51,000, public building improvements $50,000, town reports $250, insurance expense $144,900, police salary and wages $1,122,113, police expense $145,000, police capital outlay $32,500, Byfield Fire Protection Wages $106,150, Byfield Call Fire Wages $78,650, Byfield Fire Protection Flat Rate $70,000, Byfield Training Wages $8,000, Fire Insurance Premiums $23,000, Newbury Fire Protection Wages $95,520, Newbury Call Fire Wages $78,605, Newbury Fire Protection Flat Rate $70,000, Newbury Training Wages $8,000, Emergency Management Expense $10,000, Building Inspector Salary and Wages $116,265, Inspector's Vehicle Allowance $5,400, Building Inspector Expenses $8,000, Sealer of Weights and Measures $2,500, Animal Control Salary and Wages $21,805, Animal Control Expense $3,500, Hydrant Service $15,000, Triton Operating Assessment $8,568,972, Triton Debt Assessment $188,40, Woodyatech Assessment $2,206,896, Woodyatech Assessment $16,646, DPW Salary and Wages $430,521, DPW Expense $180,000, Road Improvement Program $80,000, Capital Outlay Zero, Snow and Ice Removal $155,000, Street Lighting $46,000, Board of Health Salary and Wages $60,960, Board of Health Expense $56,330, Council on Aging Salary and Wages $58,463, Council on Aging Expense $4,010, Veterans Assessment $19,260, Veteran Services Benefits $31,000, Library Salary and Wages $158,033, Library Expense $65,000, Historic Commission $650, Memorial Day $750, Long-Term Debt Principal $1,626,230, Long-Term Debt Interest $236,335, Essex Regional Retirement Assessment $476,172, Unemployment Expense $10,000, Health Insurance Expense $614,750, Dental Insurance Expect $28,240, Life Insurance Expense $1,300, Medicare Expense $40,000, for a total of $16,774,311. I am being told that I made a mistake. Where? On the Byfield Call Fire wages, in that I stated it incorrectly. The correct number is $78,605. Thank you. Motion? Second. I did not hear any holds, any discussion at all. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 or any other sum to be added to the stabilization fund or act in relation thereto. Move? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 or any other sum to fund other post-employment benefits or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. I declare it unanimous. Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $16,000 or any other sum from free cash to purchase structural firefighter gear or act in relation thereto. Any, motion rather. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. I declare it unanimous. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 or any other sum from free cash to make repairs to the Newbury Elementary School or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $411,715 or any other sum of so-called Chapter 90 funds for use by the Department of Public Works for street and road repair as well as related expenditures or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Please come to the microphone.
I'm Rosemary Love Day. I've lived for 40 years at Number Three, 35th Street. And I'm asking that a small percentage of the $411,000 requested here be spent to restore the debris that's been blocking 35th Street for seven years, so that there's no vehicle access to my property and there's no legal parking.
Ma'am, I don't think that's an appropriate discussion for this article. It's out of the scope of the article. That would be--
It's just a request for consideration.
I understand, but I would suggest that you bring that up with the town administrator. That would be the appropriate place.
I have brought it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $35,000 or any other sum from free cash to make repairs to the Town and Newbury Library or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Declare it unanimous. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 or any other sum from free cash to insulate and sheet rock the new DPW II Bay Garage or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $51,000 or any other sum from free cash to purchase a one-ton dump truck with a plow for the DPW or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize the revolving account entitled Recreation Revolving Fund established pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, funded by fees, field rental, and expended by the Recreation Committee for the purposes of maintaining certain fields with a specific limit of $60,000 for fiscal year 2014 or take any other action relative thereto. Motion? Second. I remind you, this is a revolving fund. The money comes in, the money goes out. It's sort of just administering it. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed. It's unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will reauthorize the revolving account entitled Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund established pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half, funded by the Waterways Excise under General Law, Chapter 60B, Section 2A, and sums received from waterway fees, permits, fines, and other designated sources, to be expended by the Harbor Master with the approval of the town administrator for the purposes of paying the part-time seasonal wages and expenses of the Harbor Master Department and improving and maintaining the waterways within the town with a spending limit of $70,000 for fiscal year 2014 or take any other action thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Article 14. Now, before we get into all these zoning-type articles and so on, I'm not reading them all, I'm not required to by law to read any of them, for that matter. I'm just going to read the basic beginning part. If somebody from Planning Board or anybody else wishes to explain anything briefly, we can do that. But we're going to go through these unless there's serious, serious questions here. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following street opening requirements as Chapter 89 of the Code of the Town of Newbury or act in relation thereto. I'm going to assume you've all read this because it's been posted for two weeks. Can I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, Section 4, parentheses 2, parentheses B, or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Somebody better tell us what this is about. What is this about, this article? Oh, I don't have that. I apologize. I don't have that. I don't have that in front of me. I simply have the warrant. So if everyone is satisfied that they understand it, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed. I apologize. I don't have a copy of that in front of me. I should, but I simply have the original warrant here that I review. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen-- I, oh my goodness, I apologize. All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation as follows. An act authorizing the Board of Assessors of the Town of Newbury to grant an abatement of real estate taxes to certain Plum Island homeowners for fiscal year 2013, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows, Section 1. Notwithstanding Chapter 59 of the-- Notwithstanding Chapter 59 of the General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, the Board of Assessors in the Town of Newbury are hereby authorized to grant real estate tax abatements in the amount stated $10,087.07 to the following homeowners whose homes at the following addresses on Plum Island and Newbury were destroyed as a result of beach erosion between March 9, 2013, and March 30, 2013, said abatements covering the period of March 9, 2013 through June 30, 2013. And I think you can see the six addresses there that this would apply to if the special legislation passes. I'll entertain a motion. Section 2, the Act shall take effect upon its passage. I'll entertain a motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Unanimous. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the ensuing year or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to assume liability in the manner provided by Section 29, Chapter 91 of the General Laws as amended for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the Commonwealth for improvement of development, maintenance, protection within the Town of Newbury of tidal and non-tidal rivers and streams, harbors, tidal waters, four shores, and shores along a public beach in accordance with Section 11 of Chapter 91 of the General Laws, and authorize the Selectmen to execute and deliver such bond of indemnity therefore to the Commonwealth as may be required for such work or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to adopt Section 24 of the Acts of 2009, Chapter 27, and amend Section 5K of Chapter 59 of the General Laws, as so appearing by striking out in line 13 the figure $750 and inserting in place thereof the following figure $1,000 or act in relation thereto. I need a motion and a second on this? Second? I believe there's an amendment.
Good evening. Bud Kelly, 24 School Street. I move to amend the motion as follows with simple grammar. With respect to General Law, Chapter 59, Paragraph 5K, I move that the town increase the senior work off credit from $750 to $1,000.
That is the amendment. I need a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? All those in favor of the amendment to the motion? Any opposed? So the amendment now becomes the main motion and will vote on it? All those in favor of the amended motion as stated? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 20, to see if the town will amend Chapter 56, Dogs and Other Animals of its general bylaws by amending Chapter 56, Section 1 dot A to read as follows. All dogs, six-month-old or over, must be licensed and tagged. Licencings will be done through the town clerk's office. The license period shall run from January 1st to December 31st of each calendar year, both dates inclusive. The owner or keeper of an unlicensed dog after February 1st will be fined $10 in addition to the license fee or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Unanimous. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 56, Dogs and Other Animals of its general bylaws by amending Chapter 56, Section 1 dot B to read as follows. Licensing fees shall be $10 per spayed or neutered dog and $15 for intact dogs. Kennel fees are as follows: Four dogs or less, $40. Five to 10 dogs, $75. More than $10, 10 dogs, rather, $125. The fee for a commercial kennel, including an animal daycare facility, is $125. The license period shall run from January 1st to December 31st of each calendar year, both dates inclusive. New kennel licenses may be issued pending an informational meeting, inspection, and approval from the animal control officer or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Declare it unanimous. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 56, Dogs and Other Animals of its general bylaws by amending Chapter 56, Section 1 dot D to read as follows. Anyone maintaining such a kennel shall be subject to a $100 fine. Each day shall constitute a violation or act in relation thereto. Motion? Second. I understand we have an amendment on this. It's been provided to me by the town clerk because it is strictly a grammatical error that was made. The amendment would insert language. If you look at your Article 22, it says, "Anyone maintaining such a kennel." We would insert at that point, "Without a proper license." And then it would continue. "Should be subject to $100 fine." So, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion? Anyone opposed? All those in favor of now the main motion? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Unanimous. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury bylaws-- I'm sorry. The Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Article 2, Use Districts, to modify the boundaries of the Business and Light Industrial District, BLI, as follows. How we're going to do this is, the member of the Planning Board is going to give you a brief explanation of each one, and then we can vote on it because to read them would be redundant, I think. Go right ahead, Kathleen.
Hello. Kathleen Pearson, Chair of the Planning Board. The next six articles, zoning articles, they're recommended by the Planning Board. A public hearing was held on April 4, 2013, at which time the zoning articles were explained in detail. They were posted for 90 days. Is it echoing? It feels like-- 90 days. And the Planning Board recommends all six articles. What we have at the end of each article, I'm not going to go through and read each one, I don't think. I think if you have any questions, you can get up in the mic and I'll be happy to address them. But at the end of each article, there's rationale behind it. In addition, if you look at the end of your packet of the warrant, there are also maps related to the zoning changes. When you look at the maps, you'll see a shaded area that is the existing district, and the outline, the black outline, is the proposed. So if you have any questions when she moves forward, come forward and I'll be happy to address them. Joan, you're up.
I'm being educated by town council, and it's really good to learn this stuff sometimes. So this is a two-thirds. All of our zoning articles, I think, are two-thirds votes. And this requires, you know, that we do a count if there's any appearance that it is anything but unanimous or close to that. So I'm supposed to announce that before each one of these votes that require two-thirds, correct? So I'm announcing it. Do I have to do it each time or can I do it once for everything?
You have to announce that it requires a two-thirds vote. And then if you're not going to figure out, you have to say you're not--
Okay. Okay. So this article requires a two-thirds vote. Do I have-- Did I have a motion on this? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. So I'm-- So it's a-- It's unanimous. And we're all set. Okay. I'm learning. Thank you. Article-- Bear with me. Article 24. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote, and I'll take account only if we have to. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Article 2, Use Districts, to modify the boundaries of the portion of the commercial highway district located along Central Street on the easterly side of the Route I-95 right-of-way as follows. And we'll-- Let me get a motion first. Second. All right. You can do the explanation.
So I stated that I'm not going to go through and read it right now. If they have questions, they'll come up--
All right. I was talking to council at that time. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Article 2, Use Districts, to modify the boundaries of the Byfield Village Business District as follows. And it's been explained. Again, it's a two-thirds vote. I will count if necessary. Do I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone-- Okay, Melissa, come on up. I apologize. I was going too fast.
Melissa Gasper, 3 Johnson Lane in Byfield. I wasn't able to go to the public hearing, but I'm not in favor of increasing the business districts. I know that sometimes the commercial use is better for tax space, but I also think that it's changing the feeling of the downtown area in Byfield. I think the larger area on the other side of 95, it's like four or five times from the map over on Pearson Plaza, is making a much larger business zone. And in Byfield, which has a little, small town field, I don't see the advantage for the people that live there to make it into a business district.
Any other discussion?
Do you want me to clarify?
All those in favor? Opposed. I think it's clear we have one no and everyone else is in favor. So I'm not going to take account unless somebody objects. Okay. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Article 3, Regulations of Use Districts, to modify certain uses in Section 97 hyphen 3 dot M Table of Use Regulations, and revise related language in Section 97 hyphen 3 dot C dot 1A as follows, and that's been explained. Can I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, Article 10, General Regulations, Section 97 dash 10 dot D, Accessory Apartments, as follows. Kathleen, I apologize. I was talking to council. Did you address this one?
I said that there's rationale at the end. If anybody had any questions--
Okay.
I'd address it then.
Can I get a motion on this then? Any-- And a second? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw by adding provisions for ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations as follows. And again, I'm not going to read it. Can I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone.
My name is Frank Bertolino, and I live in Maple Terrace. And yes, I'm the gentleman who brought the rail-- who brought the sage stone to the solar people to Scotland Road. So if anybody has any questions, I am the person who did that. My problem that I have with this article is, number one, how will it affect the appeal process that is-- that is in-- is happening now with the latest vote for Scotland Road with the-- that the Selectmen took? That's number one. And number two, I remember hearing during that last meeting we had about how the Selectmen had to vote based on, you know, public health, safety, welfare. Did not mention anything. And according, from what I understand, the state does not consider impacts such as scenic, natural, agricultural. So this is a concern to me. And quite honestly, my thoughts are, unless someone can prove me otherwise, that I feel this article should be tabled until the appeal process is complete and on the Scotland Road solar project.
I'm going to have town council address this.
Hi, I'm Ginny Kramer, Town Counsel. With respect to the current appeal that's happening, the passage or non-passage of this has no impact. The appeal is going to be based upon the standard as it existed at the time the special permit was applied for. And since there was not a solar bylaw in place, the Selectmen used the closest available vehicle, which was the distribution of-- distribution and generation of electrical facility or something to that effect. So they used the standards that are existing in the bylaw for that particular district in conjunction with state law, and those are the standards that they used. And I disagree with your statement that the public health, safety, and welfare does not include issues such as protection of historically valued parcels, et cetera. So whether you pass it or not, there's no impact on the current appeal. And the reason that it has been proposed is because there's currently a complete vacuum with respect to solar, and there's nothing for the Special Permit Granting Authority to refer to when looking at a solar application. So I won't speak to the process by which this bylaw was written, but it was lengthy and involved, and it represents what the Planning Board believes is a good, solid solar bylaw to use in future decisions, but won't impact past ones.
So basically, this is-- this is providing the town, if it should pass, with language in its bylaws to address future applications and has nothing to do with the concern that this gentleman brought up. Thank you. Kathleen, did you have anything else you needed to say?
I would urge everybody to vote in favor of this. Right now, we do not have any bylaw on the books, and there are rumors of a number of applications moving forward in the near future. So if this is not passed, we will have no guidelines.
Thank you.
Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights. I concur with Mr. Bertolino and his remarks, but also, my biggest concern after going to all the public hearings on the current permit that was requested by the Pickles, if you look under Section 1, 2C, the special permit citing under this bylaw change for solar fields larger than two acres, the special permit will be voted for or against by the sitting Selectmen. I believe this is such an important topic going forward, not just for Newbury but for every town, that I think to put the decision of a special permit in the hands of five people does not necessarily reflect the will of the town. I would like to see that considered to be changed to a vote of town meeting based on a recommendation of the Planning Board and others. I witnessed how this vote came down of the current process. I think there was debatable or questionable advice given by town council--
Well, hold it, hold it, hold it. You have to stay within the scope of this article, okay? I think we're venturing out. We talk-- The discussion has nothing to do with what's happening with that particular project. This is proposed new legislation. And up to that point, I thought you were doing great.
No, no, you're exactly right. And that's why my concern of this article is how the special permit citing--
That part I agree with. I just thought you were going into something else. My fault.
Well, I'm giving it some context on why I think it should be considered changed here.
All right.
Instead of a vote by the Selectmen, it should be a vote of town meeting for anything over two acres.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, Dale. So are you amend-- are you proposing an amendment to the article, Dale? Because if so, there's a form up here. Yeah, but you still have to do it the right way. I'm sorry. Well, we just stop while you write it up because we have nothing else to do until you do that. While it's being written up, is there any other discussion? Anyone else that wants to come up and speak on this? Okay. Thank you. Kathleen Schorr.
Kathleen Pearson, Chair of the Planning Board. It's unusual for an application like this to go to town meeting. It is normally a board. With the current-- The difference between the previous application and one if this bylaw was to pass, the difference would be that it would be the Board of Selectmen making the decisions, but you would have input from all the other boards as required in the bylaw. I'm not in favor of the amendment.
My proposed-- my proposed amendment, just Section 1, Subset 2. Okay.
So we now have an amendment to article twenty-eight, and I'm not going to read the whole article, as I said. This particular amendment is specific to the first page of the article under one F two C, which would be the very bottom paragraph on the page, if I'm reading this correctly. And it would read, just, I'm just going to read section C the way the amendment is suggested, okay? It would now read, "Special permit citing any ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation occupying two acres of land or more on one or more adjacent parcels, either in common ownership or included in one solar photovoltaic project application, including parcels separated by a roadway, shall require a special permit in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Newbury prior to obtaining a building permit. For purposes of this bylaw, the town meeting is the special permit granting authority." That's how that would read. So we would strike the words, "The Board of Selectmen," and insert "Town Meeting."
Counsel, do I have to make the annual town meeting?
Okay. Town meeting. So now I will entertain a motion. I assume, Dale, you're moving this thing? Where did it go? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second? Okay. Now we will have a discussion only on the amendment. Does anyone wish to discuss the amendment? Not yet. This gentleman.
I'm Larry Gay at two oh seven High Road. I have a couple of questions on the amendment. I support the amendment that the selectmen should not be the decision-making body vis-a-vis town zoning issues. But it was stated a few moments ago that there are many proposals in the queue for these solar arrays. My question is, are these existing proposals governed by the existing laws that are already in place, or would the new proposal have to be subject to this new amendment?
I believe town council answered that already. If the application is already in place, it's subject to the then-existing statutes, laws, regulations, et cetera. Anything that would be applied for subsequent to this vote tonight would be subject to whatever the resulting vote would have created for a regulation.
Subsequently.
Is that correct, counsel?
Yes.
Subsequently, do we know how many proposals are in the queue?
That's not relevant to this article.
I think it has a relevancy, because we don't know whether or not there's five, ten.
That's not relevant to the article, sir, in my opinion. Opinion of the moderator.
Well, your opinion is well taken, but I think it has an impact on the voting decision that we're about to take. Because I believe that if, if there are multiple proposals already in the queue that would not be subject to this article, then this article has no impact on solar arrays. There's only so many solar arrays that you can construct in the town. But it does make us say, I don't know how many solar arrays are in the queue. And that's really what my concern is, if there is one, two, or ten.
With all due respects, Mr. Gay, I think we, we wouldn't know. We could have one on the table now. We could have ten on the table in a month. I mean, I'm not sure what the relevance of that is.
I think, I think we, I think planning board knows how many proposals they have detained. And it's a piece of information that would be of value in running a vote on this amendment. That's all.
I have no objecting to providing the information. I'm just not sure it's relevant to the article. That's all.
I can say that I'm not aware of any applications that have been submitted at this point.
So we're unaware of any others?
But.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir, you were next. Please state your name again, sir.
Frank Bertolino, Maple Terrace, Newbury. Most, most all probably don't realize this, but a two-acre site would never happen. It just would never happen. The fees that are involved that a solar company needs to apply for, what is the cost, it wouldn't, it couldn't happen. A, a seven to eight acre site might produce, if it was clear enough, might produce a one DC megawatt. What's proposed over on Scotland Road is a four DC megawatt site. And that's roughly fifteen acres. So two acres is not going to.
This is nothing to do with.
You're out of water.
A two-acre site, this is kind of meaningless, is what I'm getting at. Bringing it as small as two acres, it's useless.
Thank you. David, I just don't see, you know. I'm going to ask town council to speak at this point.
A special permit is a creature of statute in the Commonwealth. It's, it's considered and awarded or not awarded under the general laws of the Commonwealth. The town meeting cannot be the special permit granting authority. If you, if you just peruse this article or the proposed bylaw, it requires public hearings, it requires notification, it requires the submission of lengthy documents and plans. The standards under which the applications are evaluated are all set forth herein. I think just a quick reading of this will, will make it clear that this is not something that could be administered by the town meeting. If anybody was involved or watched the Pickle special permit application, you know that there were three or four public hearings. The special permit general law requires a supermajority of the board. It's just, it's not, a town meeting is not an appropriate special permit granting authority, and it would not be approved by the Attorney General were, were the amendment to become the motion and be passed.
Thank you. What I think, Dale, just a minute, what I think I'm hearing you say, council, is that this is an inappropriate amendment legally. Okay. Dale, one last word, then we're going to move this.
I would just encourage everyone that didn't get to go to the public hearing to review it online, to see just how the deliberative process took place, and the hoops that this board of selectmen were asked to jump through to approve a special permit. It made it almost impossible. And this town stared at six hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and based on one vote, we're not going to get that revenue over the next twenty-five years on someone's private property.
Dale, that is not relevant to this article.
Thanks for listening.
I believe that, based upon town council, that this amendment is inappropriate legally. And I would ask that the motion and the second be withdrawn, just to keep it clean. But if not, we'll vote on it. Dale, will you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Based upon what, town council?
I will withdraw the motion if people will withdraw it to turn down the energy levels.
You, either you withdraw, are you withdrawing your amendment?
I will withdraw.
And we, whoever seconded, will you withdraw the second?
No.
Yes or no? Yes? All right. Now we're back to voting on the main article. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All.
This is two-thirds. I, yes, yes, I'm going to do a count. Who are the counters?
Bud Kelly.
Bud Kelly's going to count on this side. Want to count, Dave? Can Dave Powell count on this side, please?
I'm yes.
I'm sorry?
Your group, what do you count, like four and?
I will get to that. Just doing countery. All right. All those in favor of the article as presented, please stand to be counted. You may sit on this side. Thank you. the opposed, please, on your side? The vote was fifty-four in favor and eight opposed. It passed by more than a two-thirds margin. Thank you. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court for the enactment of a special law creating a new regional Veterans Service District, including the town of Merrimack and one or more of its neighboring communities, which may include Newbury Port, Newbury Salisbury, and/or Amesbury, provided, however, that the general court may make clerical and/or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the board of selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court, and to authorize the board of selectmen to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives to the petition, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
No.
Second? Any discussion on this article? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve this town meeting.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.